To ask that sometime I forget to say this, but please if you got telephone on you, which most of us do, just put it on silence or turn it off, either one. So that does go off and we will call the Warren City Council meeting of August the 11th, 2025 to order. Ask the city clerk to call the rule.
Councilmember Hooper?
Present.
And councilmember Burks Frazier?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Telfrey?
Present.
Councilmember Mosley?
Here.
Councilmember Atkins?
Here.
All right, 100% attendance, all six members present. So of course that makes a quorum. First item we need to deal with is our minutes of July the 14th of 2025.
We've got the minutes of July 14th, 2025, be approved as received by hard copy and email. Second.
Okay, you've got a motion second, you get that. Okay. Uh, question discussion?
Thank you for the attendance.
Any additions, corrections? Anybody see any problem with anything in the minutes? All in favor approval, show of hands, please. I see six in favor. I approve of the minutes. That'll move us to the city clerk's report and I'll, she's got it all laid out there for you. The first section is just our revenues and expenditures for the month and year-to-date. Of course, this is for July for the month and then year-to-date. You can go through that. She's got it highlighted, where we are currently, year-to-date. And everything looked, you know, as far as where we are in the budget, we're in good shape. I mean, it looked pretty good. We got a couple of categories, special categories that I think we're knocking on the door of maybe about to exceed, but these are not places where a lot of big expenditures will still be coming, but our regular police, fire, so forth and so on, our main departments, everything at my glance looked pretty good. You've got cash balances and I do want you to continue to pay close attention to your cash balances. They have continued, at least the accounts that are just general purpose accounts, continue to shrink because we have been for some time, it's costing more money to operate than we bring them in on a cash flow basis. Now, we had good, strong cash balances for a long time and that's, that's seen us through, but we're gonna have to address that certainly early next year in my, in my opinion. It will be, I know the council will be talking about that later. And then you've got your, I don't see anybody, I'm just gonna go ahead and give these reports and then we can act on the finances. You got city and county sales tax. It looked like our, the county tax, I think that's the one on the front there, is it on the front of the table?
No, that's the county, it's down.
It's down from the same month last year and down for the year, 3%. And that's the portion of the county sales tax that the city gets. The other one, the city sales tax, now that's 100% to cities, it is down 4% overall from the same time last year, but you will notice that for the month of July, just a little bit up over a year ago for the month, the monthly amount received. So that was a little bit of encouragement. Okay.
We approve the statement of revenue and expenditures as presented on behalf of the city clerk by the mayor. Second.
Okay, you've got the motion second. Got a question or discussion on any of the financial reports? It's all there for you to read, look at. You got any question or comment? And even if you do, the more talk to mayor or the city clerk, you're more than welcome to at any time. All those in favor, approval, show of hands, please. I see six in favor and that is sufficient. Thank you. And then you've got the Bradley County District Court report, which is submitted to us by the, by the judge. That's just for information. Okay, item six, mayor's report. I want to give you a brief update on our industrial prospects, particularly two of them that we've been working on for some time. I'm not gonna belabor this. I'm, I'm a little down in the dumps about one of them, the Blue Sky Carbon Project, it's just not moving. Uh, they have several, this is the old poultry plant facility out there. I will remind everybody that the city of Warren has no money invested in this project. We have no ownership of any of the facilities or anything. This is strictly a deal, although we've certainly been pushing and trying to help. This is a proposed deal between Arkansas Department of Finance Authority and the private company. And every time they say, okay, we got everything done, we're ready to go, they haven't come through with the information and the, the legal documents for ADFA. ADFA is very frustrated and very unhappy. And so I, I can't tell you, but a couple of weeks ago, I talked to the company again. They said, hey, we got this thing done, we're ready. And I said, well then pull the trigger. They still hadn't done it. So that's all I can tell you right now. But I will tell you this, one glimmer of good news, I got two other contacts that we had made with us about that same facility, totally different companies. So we're pursuing them. I'm not gonna lie to you. We are pursuing them and we're doing that along with the DACT, of course, because again, they, they have the control of the property. The other one is, is out here on the east side of town, the Allen Corporation, the one that come in some time ago and wanted to, even took out an option on, on some of the land out there. This is not the new land that was just recently bought. This is what we had out there, or BCDC has for some time. They have basically said they're still working on doing that project, but they think they may be one to two years away. So every time I think something's moving good for us on that, it seems like it just kind of backs up a little bit, but we continue to work on it. We have got the hardwood mill at the HFP facility out here. Again, that's owned by a private company. They got it on the market. Of course, it's not functioning right now, but they got the property on the market. They've got commercial realtors that are trying to market it. They have been in touch with us. We have that on our website. We have it on the state industrial website. We're doing everything we can. And I know of one company that's made them an offer. I know of one company that's made them an offer. And they didn't think very highly of the offer, so it hasn't gone anywhere, okay? And that's, that's a private company. We don't, again, don't control that, but we are trying to, to help and push it. If anybody's got any questions, I'll try to answer them, but that's it in a nutshell. We are working every day, trying to find other prospects and, you know, for both the facilities that we have and the land that we have. As far as the grant update, I'm gonna give y'all a couple of quick things here. We do have an application submitted with the help of the Economic Development District. We've submitted it to the state of Arkansas, Arkansas Economic Development Commission. It's a grant program through that agency for the cultural center. It's, the grant is about, I don't remember the exact, something over $600,000. And we would have to provide a little matching money. We got, we got to figure that out if we get the grant. But we are, we do have that submitted. I hope we'll know something in the not too distant future. We also, of course, are preparing a, a grant to renovate and upgrade the Warren public pool over on Rock Street. And I wanna, I'm gonna take a chance, option right here to thank councilmember Burks Frazier and Kyle Waggonan and the whole bunch. They have kept that thing band-aided together. It's old, it's got a lot of issues, it leaks, all kinds of things, but we've been able to keep the health department at bay to let us operate it. And we had a good year, by the way. Had a, had one of the better years we've had in a while. And they, they did a great job. I wanna, I wanna say that. Just keeping it going and, and, you know, run it and everything. We hope to be able to do major renovations on that, get it up to current standards and repairs. We got that grant, and we're working on it. We got cycles coming up to apply for that, hopefully before next year. Uh, and that's about it. Of course, we're fishing and looking constantly for other grant funds to help us do anything and everything that we can find to do. But that's just to keep y'all updated on where we are right now. So anybody got a question on anything? Okay. Council members, do y'all have anybody, any you need to recognize to speak? Councilmember Henderson?
I don't have anyone that I would like to recognize to speak, but I would like to just commend Alderman Hooper on the back-to-school bash, and Alderman Frazier, who was out there with the kids in the pool. I know that it was not an easy task, pulling things together and organizing. Having served as chair of the job fair for years, I know it's a lot of work. So I just wanted to commend you for what you did.
Good job.
Yes, very good job on, on both ends.
Very well attended. Lot of people, lot of people out there. And I know she had churches, several churches and groups and organizations. I think even Chapel Woods, our nursing center had a, had a booth out there. I saw them. So it was, a lot of people participated. She did a great job in getting it organized and putting it together.
And then lastly, I know we recognized Alderman Burks when he was alive and he could smell and hear what was stated. But I do think that it would be most appropriate if we would honor him again with a resolution for his lives lived and his contributions to the city of Warren.
Could we do that in September?
Whenever, I would say whenever his family is available to come back down, because we definitely would want the family.
We'll go ahead and get something put together so we can get ready and then let them know that if that's appropriate.
I think the obituary was well-written and it would have pretty much everything that he would be, you know, from there. That's, that's all I have.
Well, I, I just wanna second your, your comments about the former councilmember Burks. He was a good guy and top of everything and a great city council member for a long time and did, did good work for, for the city. And we certainly want to memorialize that properly.
He loved, he loved Warren and in particular the Peniceville area.
Yes, he did.
Quite often.
Yes, he did. Yes, he did. Yes, sir, Mr. Telfrey?
Nah, I'm just saying, man.
Oh, man. You just test the fan over there.
Yeah, test the fan over there.
All right, thank you. Any other councilmember? We have anybody signed in?
We have one, Angela Russell.
Angela Russell. Angela, come on up. If you would, just, just step right up here.
Okay. Hello, hi, everybody.
Just for the record, tell them who you are so we gotta do the record.
Okay. My name is Angela Russell and I'm here speaking on behalf of our committee that we established on July the 12th, 2025 on a Saturday. We was out at the Union Cemetery. And I'm just standing here today to let the city know that we're trying to keep the Union Cemetery beautiful. And we want to help with that by simply, when we get ready to clean up again, that the city help us by picking up the garbage bags and everything. And I talked to Mr. Rob Johnson on the phone and he was very cooperative with helping us. The Union Cemetery have been in effect for many, many years, way before my time, probably some of you are. So I wanted to know the history of the Union Cemetery and I talked to Mr. George Hammons, who was over at Hammons' Funeral Home. And he said the history of it, how it was established, the Union Cemetery, all the churches in Warren, Arkansas, all got together years ago, they united together and it came over the Union Cemetery. And it's tax-exempt and it's a community cemetery. And Ms. Camille Campus, who is our president, we have officers as well. She wasn't pleased with how, you know, she wasn't able to get her mother headstone in, at the grave where she's laid to rest. So she made a statement on Facebook and it went worldwide. And we stepped up and said, we're gonna help clean the cemetery. And we all got together on July the 20th, oh, excuse me, July the 12th, 2025, and we established the Union Cemetery Cleaning Committee. And on July the 26th, we all got together and we got started at 6:00 AM to 9:00 AM cleaning the Union Cemetery. We had a lot of volunteers. Some of them that had, that volunteered with us have family members that have been laid to rest for many, many years. Also, people that did not have family members out there. We all got together and we cleaned the cemetery up. And Mayor Reeve, I just wanna thank you for listening to us and being a part of whatever that we need. And it made my heart feel good and I passed it along to the committee members. And also, I wanna thank Mr. Rob Johnson, who was over the sanitation department. He also stated if they could help in any way, just call and let him know. So I, my motto is teamwork makes the dream work. And if you work as a team, then it will be a success. I know there's other cemeteries in Bradley County, but I just wanted to focus on the Union Cemetery because I wanna say last year it was vandalized, headstones was turned over, profanity was sprayed on the headstones. And I feel like, because my husband and my son is buried at the Union Cemetery. I lost my family in October 2015. And I said, would we be fitting of me to be a part of this committee and keep that cemetery beautiful? So I'm standing here on behalf of the Union Cemetery Cleaning Committee that you all helped us through this. You may have loved ones, I know Mr. Joe have loved ones out there, his dad is out there. And we're just asking if you would like to volunteer your time. Please come out and join us. Our next cleaning committee, meeting will be on August the 19th at Union Hill at 6 o'clock PM. And if you're not doing anything, please, you can come out. We take donations. If you would like to donate anything, you can do that too. You don't have to have a family member out there to donate. And we open up a Union Cemetery Cleaning Committee account at the Union Bank. We said that we'd be fitting to choose Union Bank. But anyway, and the money would be towards like cleaning supplies, like garbage bags, gloves. We may have to pay somebody to do some of the cleanup work at the cemetery. But I was always asked, what is the most beautiful place in the world? And the answer was the cemetery. We wanna keep our cemetery beautiful because after the vandalism and everything and then Ms. Camille, she's our president, we come up with officers, I'm the secretary. Her sister's not here today, she's the vice president, Commander Robinson. Ms. Carolyn McCoy, she is one of the treasurers. And Ms. Irma Bowden, she's on the committee. Mr. Tony Allen and Ms. Jenny Robinson, she's on the committee. Can y'all stand up and let recognize each other? And so I'm not trying to take up too much of your time, but I just wanna thank you for allowing me this opportunity to stand up here to let you know our mission and our cause. So again, teamwork makes the dream work. And we can't do it alone. The city and everybody has to come together to do it. And if y'all need us for anything, I don't mind helping. And your event was nice and I was so happy to be a part of it, our organization. And again, that's all I have. And again, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you said that the next meeting is gonna be August the 19th. You didn't say what time.
6:00 PM. I thought I did.
Oh, you might have did.
At Union Hill.
Okay.
Everybody's in, you know, welcome to attend the meeting.
So no date has been set for the next cleanup date?
We will, we will decide that at the meeting. And after we decide it at the meeting, we always go live or put it on social media and it will go in the Eagle Democrat as well.
Okay.
Is there any more questions? Okay, thank you all.
Thank you. And just on behalf of the city, we appreciate everybody that's been working on this. We sometimes get calls about several of our cemeteries in, in Warren and, of course, none of these are city-owned cemeteries.
Yeah, community.
We don't have any city-owned cemeteries in Warren. Sometimes folks don't realize that, so they'll call, but I should've thought it was the appropriate thing. So did Mr. Johnson that y'all, they were gonna clean up, set out garbage bags or even limbs or things and just put them out as close as you can get it to the road. We will pick it up or if you'll let us know, you know, that you've done it so we can try to get it scheduled.
And I'm so sorry, I forgot to mention one other thing. If it's appropriate for me to stand back up.
Yeah, you can do it right there.
Stand right here. Okay, if it's anybody that's interested of being buried at the Union Cemetery, we have also the Union Cemetery Association. And Stacy Harden, our Billy Joe Harden, they are over that association. So it's two separate things. We're the cleanup committee and they're over the Union Cemetery Association. If you would like to be a member, you would have to pay $50. And it would be a 60-day waiting period and then after that, then you're good to go for the whole year. And then after that, you start all over again and pay your $50 again for the next following year. So if you would like to be a member of that association, contact Stacy Harden. And his number is 870-820-0502. I'm not familiar with Billy Joe, but if you know him, Billy Joe Harden is with his brother over the association. Or if you just wanna go to Hammons' Funeral Home, you can go to Elaine, who was the secretary, and you can give her $50 to her. That's all I have.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Have we left all the person we had? Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Uh, let's, let's get on and try to move through our regular business here. We're down to item seven on the agenda, administrative and standing committee report, police chief. I think he can hear me out there. There he comes. Come on in, chief. They've got a copy of your full lots of paperwork. Come in, chief, like.
Do you have any more thinking? You know, once again, you know, the figures on the monthly report pretty much shows what our activity for, for the month of July. If you would, I, on the second page of that monthly report, I could draw something to your attention. The, the active police officer that we have on our current roster, you can tell we were kind of scraping the bottom of the barrel as far as personnel, as far as needed people. I'd like to...
Not quality, but more numbers.
Well, numbers, yes. No, 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 more technical. More technical, not quality.
I'm just joking.
Um, I'd like to draw your attention to one of the things that's, that I changed since I put out this monthly report. You know, the section, I won't go into detail as far as names, but the section where it says uncertified, going to the academy at the August the 25th for 13 weeks, that first name that you see, they will not be attending the academy due to personal issue. It'll probably be a year before they can attend the academy. Well, over a year before they can attend the academy. So that, that name can be scratched out as far as attending the academy. So that puts a even more dire situation as far as personnel, by this code. We are still currently advertising police officers from patrolling. Currently, right now, we have no applications for patrolling at the right now, but we are still advertising for the separate applications. So if anybody's interested, so feel free to come to us and put an application. That's about the only change I have with the monthly report.
Got any questions for the chief? This, this has gotten serious and I don't think we're the only town fighting the battle, but, and I know I've probably repeated a few things I've said in the past, but I just wanna make sure everybody understands. Of course, this council has tried to improve the salary situation, but that's not the only issue, but it is some because of, just for example, I'm repeating myself, but the Arkansas State Police now pays starting salaries $70,000 a year. The states kill us. I mean, you know, the person wants to be a police officer, they go, they won't know where they make the most money, obviously, and then, and take care of their families. We understand that. We can't pay that. We don't have that kind of revenue. But we are trying to improve it. It's something we're gonna have to keep addressing, but we, we've gotta find some more bodies, you know, qualified people and of course, gotta get, sorry, they're not certified already, meaning hadn't been to the police academy. That's how many weeks?
13.
13-week course you have to go and pass it. Not just attend it, but pass it. So you can see there's a lot involved. If you can become certified and be a police officer, that's state law. So chief and I talked about this till we're both, I think we both get tired of talking about it. We're trying to find solutions, but find people that are interested. And we're gonna, and, and I can promise you, other communities and the state police are recruiting our people. Okay? They're doing it. So we gotta, we gotta do something that we're gonna have to address this in the longer term. And the longer term is getting shorter. So we're gonna have to figure something out. Questions for the police chief? Uh-uh, they're, they're doing their best down there. Everybody's working hard. And I, and I wanna say this and I'll be very quick, but I spent my morning out at the first day of school where we got major traffic, you know, situations now because all the schools are out there in one location. And we had two police, police officers out there, the chief. Of course, they, they'd ask for police officers every morning, every afternoon. We don't have the personnel to do that constantly. But if you don't have somebody out there, you got a problem. I'm here to tell you, we're keeping the traffic moving and safely. And so we're, we're looking at all kinds. Of course, we're talking to the state about trying to get some signalization out there. They say that it's not needed, it don't qualify, and they're not gonna, you know, help pay for it, which is, you know, substantial money. But we're still trying to work on that. But I wanna give the two officers you had out there this morning. I stayed out there from before 7:00 o'clock to nearly 8:00. I didn't get out in the middle of the street and try to wreck traffic or nothing, but stood over to the sidewalk and tried to kind of spot for them, because you just can't believe how much traffic's coming and going out there unless you're out there in it. And then trying to get out, back out of the campus, back on the market street again. That's the bottom egg right there. They did a marvelous job, the two guys out there that they did. I watched them. And they kept it going and it moved, I think as good as it'll move. But right in the middle of all of that, we got a disturbance call in South Warren. And one of those officers had to get the car and get out of there and go to it. That's what we're talking about. That's what we're facing. And we're gonna do our best to keep helping and try to come up with a solution to this. But it's, it's putting an awful lot on the city police department and, and, you know, unless we just wanna leave the rest of the town on police for about an hour or so every morning. Not quite as bad the afternoons, because they're kind of staggering when the different schools get out. But in the mornings, I'm telling you, it's, I mean, most of y'all know this, but I'm just, I'm just telling you, it's a, it's an issue. The public needs to understand it. I'm sorry, public comments are overruled.
Oh, okay.
Take anything else right now, but be glad to talk to you. Okay. Anything else for the chief? Yes?
No, I was just going to elaborate a little bit on what you stated. You are correct with the new pay plan with, with the state police effective July 1st, $74,443, around $70,000 entering and then after about four years and then after seven years, we're looking at around $84,000 plus. I, I really don't know what the answer is. Is it with other cities? They're, they're having, I mean, I thought about sign-on bonuses, but, you know, with some kind of agreement of staying, you know, if you're gonna do the sign-on bonuses. I know they're doing that for like nurses, RNs, ONs, you know, et cetera. Don't really know what the answer is, but we definitely, committee, I know you all are looking at that, but we definitely need to look at some incentives and there where we can pool the dollars for these incentives, because we definitely want good police protection, good fire protection, and that is what our sales tax was actually passed for.
And it's still be- And it's still being used for that. The, the, the problem is, that was in nineteen ninety-four.
But we're gonna have to boost the perks.
And the cost has gone up so much on-
We're gonna have to boost the perks in order to entice and be a little bit more than competitive.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more. I wish I had a good solution too, right off the bat.
I'm gonna piggyback off what you're saying, and I only mentioned the state police, but it's calling the other larger departments, departments larger than Warren, to also drive their price, their, their salaries up. So, we're in stiff competition, kind of sitting at the rear of the triangle of law enforcement. Got the state police in my backyard in Monticello, Drew County, right next door to us, Union County on the right and right down the street, Jefferson County, Pym Brook, right down the street. We're kind of in a nomad swing.
And we didn't even mention Highway Department.
Right, Highway Department, right, right. Crossed it, Ashley County, yes ma'am.
Okay, well, I know, I don't mean to sound gloom and doom on everything, but we got to address this some way somehow. We gotta do it sooner than later, in, in my opinion. You know, there's only two ways to, to deal with it. That's to shut some things down in city government, or come up with some more money. So, that's, I mean, we're not, unfortunately, we're not, or maybe fortunately, we're not the federal government, we can't print money. We have a balance of budget every year, and what we've got, so. Questions for the chief? Anything else? Chief, thank you. I appreciate it. All right, police committee, if you want to-
We didn't, we didn't have a meeting, so we're getting-
Thank you. Our chief is not, he's, he's on vacation. He is on vacation. You've got a copy of his, uh, report, and I'm just gonna let y'all look at it. If anybody's got any question, I'll even try to answer it, or I'll, or I will, uh, you should answer when it gets bad, but. Only thing I can tell you is fire department is still functioning, 'cause I've been down there even over the weekend, making sure.
I got a question.
Most of you there.
And we talked about this before, but like-
Yeah.
On the insurance thing, and again, the people aren't paying this. But on the insurance, we have someone here from one January twenty-four.
Yeah.
So, it seems like there could be a phone call, Matt, you know what I mean, just to get some of them off.
Well, they all say they're pending.
Right, and they have said-
I'm not sure what that means, 'cause you're right, some of them go back ways. I, I'll have to just get an answer for you on that.
I think all of the toll free's going to give an update from our meeting relating to-
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Good.
It came up during our meeting, so I'm sure he's gonna discuss it.
All right, let's, uh, what, councilmember Tollfree, you're on. Fire committee, I know y'all had a meeting, go ahead and give whatever report you need.
Thank y'all.
I was beginning to say, boy.
Yeah, yeah, look at that. Okay, we had a, the Warren City Council Fire Committee meeting, met on August fifth, twenty twenty-five, at five P.M. Uh, prayer was given by S. S. Darke Henderson, and after the prayer, we called, I called the meeting to order. Purpose of the meeting was general business, and under that general business, it was addressed about the pending and, uh, what the ones was gonna have to do to address that. But, uh, some of them that wouldn't insure is the ones that we're not gonna be able to get any money from. And then the, on the insurance part, is the ones that was insured just for that, that would get their money. So, it's, it's a hit and miss thing is where you look at it. Because, uh, the thing about it is, when somebody's renting, and then they don't have the insurance on it, it just went on, and then we talked about, that was one of the first things that we talked about. Then also, we talked about the, the state of the fire department. We have thirty-three qualified firefighters at this time, repaid on staff. And so, uh, we talked about the employees, and so, and then the fire chief, he proposed to us that he needed a new vehicle. And so, we discussed it, and, uh, so after discussing, uh, councilman Henderson made a motion that, uh, we passed the motion for twenty-five, up to twenty-five thousand dollars for a vehicle.
Utilizing at eight thirty-three funds.
Yes. And it was seconded by Alderman Hoop. And, uh, upon calling for a vote, the vote passed. So, at this time, I recommended to the overall council.
So, are you making a motion that we, uh, go out and procure, uh, this is, this is for the chief now, the chief's vehicle, correct?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I got a second. All right, council members, open for discussion. There's a motion on the floor that you utilize eight thirty-three, that's special insurance tax money we get just for the fire department. And I think what the chief's got in mind is a new used vehicle, not a brand-new one, but a real, a little-
And utilize the current one when they go out for brush fires, uh, et cetera.
Not getting rid of the one that's got-
Not wearing out the new one, but keeping the old one to, uh, to go out in rugged things.
Is there any questions? Yes, sir.
Just a little discussion, I don't know, when we got away from that, but what brought it back to my mind when we got our city flag. What happened to the time that every time we bought vehicles, we put the city's emblem on it to make customer? Everybody that sees us out here dealing out this money, they never see actually the money passing them. So, they ask all the time, what are those vehicles that we purchased? Could we go back to our branding?
We can certainly take a look at that, but to answer your question, I think it was money. You know, it caused to do that, and that just, and what we were doing at one time, uh, is kind of a different issue, which we can talk about additionally, but the motions to get the vehicle or to go out and purchase a vehicle, we were buying those press-on stick-on emblems.
Decals.
Decals, thank you, I'm trying to get the right terminology there. We weren't painting anything, but we were just putting them on, and we don't really have them on, I don't think, any of our city vehicles of any department. I, I like what Mr. Tollfree's talking about, but of course, they do cost money, and we're struggling there right now, so. But we can, we can talk about that further, if that's okay, Mr. Tollfree, if we can go ahead and act on the truck, is that?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Is that okay?
Call for a vote.
Okay, anybody else got a question or comment? This is on, on purchasing the truck, using, we're talking about a pickup truck here, okay? We're not talking about a new fire engine, uh, using the eight thirty-three money. All in favor, show of hands? I see six in favor, so we will proceed with that. Anything else, Mr. Tollfree?
Yes, it is, we also discussed personnel. And, uh, he was thinking that somebody was justified a raise, but through deliberation with the committee. You know, sometimes, I guess, after working a highway myself, and somebody tells you, you got a raise, and then when you get your little old check, you wonder, did I get a raise? So, we was wanting to look at something stipulation of, instead of thirteen cent, to actually be able to give a raise when the raise is due. So, uh, we're gonna refer that and try to look back through it through ways, and means committed to see, before we proceed on it, what can we actually pay? When can we actually pay it? And who do we actually pay it to? And that was all we discussed. And after discussing that, there was no more, uh, other business, so we adjourned.
Okay, thank you, sir, appreciate y'all meeting and, and, uh, going over those items. Okay, that'll bring us to the sanitation manager. Mr. Johnson? You're at the door, come on in. Let's talk solid waste first, and then, uh, y'all do have a report there about number of vehicles that's been hauled off, how the limbs picked up, junk picked up. Go ahead and just give an update on that.
Uh, you see there, we removed eleven automobiles, uh, picked up limbs in eighteen houses, twelve houses we picked up junk in. And sending out letters, we had four properties that cleaned up on their own, out of the four that we sent off. We got, had a hundred percent cooperation from residents. Sanitation crew's been working hard in this heat, they, they've done an excellent job, uh, and, uh, actually, they've surprised me quite a bit on, on what they're getting done in today, with the heat the way it is. Plenty of breaks, and the city provides them with plenty of fluids, uh, consumed during this heat. Our crew's working hard, and, uh, if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Anybody got any questions about our solid waste system? Councilmember Atkins, I think your committee maybe has, or maybe you've visited with Mr. Johnson, or your committee's been since the last meeting, but you got anything you want to-
No, we didn't meet, nothing to-
Report or anything?
No, nothing to-
Okay. I will tell y'all that we are actively working on, for lack of a better way to put it, PR plan to get word out about our recycling, trying to expand that, and we need everybody's help on this, please. Uh, we've got a, a new drop-off center over at, uh, North Etheridge Street, at the Senior Citizen Center location, most everybody knows where that is. We drop off, drop off cardboard, and I guess some paper products too, right? We will have, we will, right now, just calling for it, we're trying to get that all done. Of course, we got our place down here by the fire department, where you can drop off paper and cardboard. We're asking everybody in Warren to help us as much as you can, uh, to just separate that from your regular garbage, don't put that out in the, in the garbage to be picked up regularly. If you can drop it off, just your personal household or small business, uh, volume at these places, it will help all of us. If you've got a pretty large, I'd say like a truckload of garbage or paper and stuff like that, uh, if you will call the solid waste office, they will try to schedule to come pick it up for you. If it's more than you can just handle, you know, just dropping it off on your own, but you gotta get on their list, you gotta call them and tell them, uh, that you got this, and they'll work it in as quick as they can. You can, a lot of people don't want to throw paper away unless it's shredded. Well, because of, you know, security reasons, social security numbers, all kinds of credit card numbers, things like that on it. If you, if you can shred it yourself, we don't, we not in a position to shred it, but if you'll shred it yourself, or, you know, mark it with something that, you know, lacks out the, the information, just put all that stuff in a garbage bag, and either drop it off at one of these centers, or again, uh, call if it's a large enough volume, and we'll try to schedule and come pick it up, 'cause this will save us money. It will save everybody money, because we don't want to have to keep raising garbage fees. And garbage cost is getting extensive. We're trying to make some changes, as most everybody knows, and I won't spend time on that. But I'm just asking the public and everybody to help us with this recycling, because everything, piece of paper or cardboard, if we don't put in the regular garbage and goes to the landfill, saves us money. Because we have to pay per ton on our garbage when we dispose of it, and we carry it to these private landfills. Rob, is anything I left out there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so just please, help us spread the word, everybody cooperate. We're gonna try to put out a good bit more publicity here in the next few weeks too, and try to push that a little bit more. Okay, building official, Rob, would you, they've got information there on how many permits you'd issue, and things like that?
Over the year, we're ahead on permits, and we're down a little bit on fees, but we've had a lot of smaller projects done, uh, between the plumbing and electrical and the building. If there's any questions on that, I'd be glad to answer those too.
This is dealing with plumbing fee permits, electrical permits, building permits, uh, those kind of things. Just for everybody's information, what is the minimum you can do remodeling or new construction before you have to buy a building permit?
Two thousand dollars, two thousand dollars is your minimum cost wise, that's, that's, that's material cost on that.
Remodeling anything, whether you're doing it yourself, or whether you're hiring somebody, if it's gonna be two thousand dollars, you have to get a permit from the building department, which is, put that out again, because there's inspections that have to be done on a lot of these things, so.
There's a lot of projects that Stephen does, a lot of projects that do not require building permits, such as replacement of windows, roofs, stuff like that, if you're normal. It's, it's more of a structural permit, when you get a concrete slab, it's not requiring a permit, if that's all you're gonna do, but if you're a wreck owner, it does require. But changing cabinets and windows and just stuff like that does not require, it's not in our code book.
Okay. You have any new property condenations to bring forward?
No, sir, but all four of the ones that we have on the condemnation list right now are making improvements on them, and I'm dealing with them all personally.
Okay, now, again, for the record, this is a project over on the southern side. Y'all know the residents, I'm talking about the property. Been a lot of work done on it, but it incomplete it, not, not, not to compliance. Uh, same thing on, uh, is it Phillips Street? West Church or Phillips? Phillips. One over there, good bit of work's been done, mainly in the front yard. It's still, you know, even the house itself's in very poor condition, but it's, people living in it. And, uh, so, and then we got one on Southern Court. Me and Rob were talking about it today, quite a bit of cleanup's been done, it has not been finished, and now the yard needs mowing again. They're not keeping the grass cut. We got those all over town, we'll get on, write somebody the letter, they'll sometime go out there and mow it. About two weeks later, it's head high again, and it's the same old story. We've actually had a few people tell us, well, we're gonna make you contact us every time we have to mow. Just, just want y'all to know, so. And then there's one on Rock Street, that some volunteers are trying to help with, and they've done a good bit of work, but they hadn't finished it. And so, uh, I would, I would encourage y'all to go, go look at them. If you tell us that you're satisfied, we'll, we'll, we'll stop. Meantime, we're trying to go ahead and get it done without carrying anybody to court. Trying our best to do that. Rob, be glad to carry and show you anything, if you just want, not sure where they are or something, we'd be glad to do that on your own time. Anybody got any questions? Or any other instructions for the administration on what you want us to do on those four?
So, let me ask you, I know we, we voted to condemn them.
Yes, ma'am.
So, when we vote to condemn, and we've done this, we've said this before, but just to get people that don't know and haven't heard or listened, once we vote to condemn it, what's the next step?
Well, the next step is that we contact the people again. Of course, we've already been in contact with all of them in the past, but we contact them in writing. Most of them will not take our certified letters that comes from the city, they reject them. But we've done, found out by law that that really don't matter. We send the letter, that's good enough for the court. So, we're sending the letters, spending a lot of money on mail. But we're sending the letters and saying, you know, this is what you've got to do, whether it's mowing the yard, or cleaning up junk, or, you know, whatever the case may be. And you need to get on it. Now, in most cases, we will ultimately, you know, hear from somebody, and we've been, if they start doing something, we've been trying to work with them to get it cleaned up. I'm gonna lie to you, they drag it out, as long as they can drag it out, and then start bringing more junk in sometime, or let the grass grow up again. We have two options. We, after the deadlines, or once we've condemned it, the city can physically either hire somebody, or we can go out there and just clean up what's been ordered cleaned up. We have to pay for all of that. That's money out of the taxpayer's pocket, and we're getting, well, we don't have enough money to do all that. Especially on some of these bigger ones. That's one option. Now, we do put liens on the property, you know, we, we do that. But as I told y'all, you may get your money back five to ten years from now. We do get some back, but it's long drawn out before you do, so the taxpayers are out the money. In the meantime, the other option, which y'all have now granted us, is to issue citations- The other option, which y'all have now granted us, is to issue citations and carry them to court. These four that he's just talked about are at that point, we could do that. Of course, we've been asked on some of them over time by the council members and other stuff. Keep working with them, keep working with them, they're making some progress, so we've tried to do that where we can. And sometimes you get more done than you do other times, it just, it just depends on the people. But those four, we can carry anytime we want to, but I try not to do that until the city council tells me, you know, we're not satisfied, it's time to go ahead and do it.
I, I guess I was under the impression that we were at level four.
We are, we are, we are. So, I mean, I can drop the hammer in the morning on every one of these, issue them tickets. We've been trying not to do it as long as they were making some effort to clean things up, but what we're finding is they'll make some effort, maybe for a week or a month or two months, and then it just stops or it starts getting bad, you know? So, you know, but we can, we can issue tickets, if y'all feel like that's what I need to do, we can start in the morning. We haul all four of those into court.
I just think about the neighbors and the women that came and, the ones that came and spoke, you know, without, you know, talking about how.
There's been a lot of cleanup done, but they were in bad conviction. I mean, these were junk yards and grown-up places and, and of course, we got that many more and more sitting out there with.
Right.
You know, we still have that, you know, we've got so much of it. I drove around a good bit over the weekend and I'm taking up time and I'm sorry, but I drove around almost every street in Warren, Saturday and Sunday. I went home depressed. At two things, number one, the personal property that will not be maintained, some of the people live in, some of the people don't live in, but it still needs to be cleaned up, and the other thing is the sheer litter that's thrown out on so many of our streets. And we clean them up and two days later, it's right back like it was, same streets. Of course, we don't know, you know, it's just people throwing stuff out, walking the streets, but I'm telling y'all, it's a problem and we don't have the manpower to keep it all cleaned up. Not if we're gonna tap potholes and fix drainage and do other stuff, we do not have the people. It's just, you know, constantly be doing that every two or three days on the, every street. I know I'm sounding a little bit frustrated, but I am a whole lot frustrated, I am, I'm trying to figure out what to do. But my thought on these four is they're, all four of them have done some cleanup, but to maybe give them another month and if they're not gonna do it, then we're just gonna have to drop the hammer. If they're not gonna go ahead and finish it. That's, that's, that's what we're thinking administratively, you know, the council's got different ideas. No, I, we don't have to come back to you and ask you, you've taken action, it's needed. We're trying to work with these people, but we've been asked to work with some of them also. So, that's one reason we've been bending over backwards and one particular individual that I don't think he could, he could handle himself anyway, but there've been some friends that's been trying to help him. And we're even picking stuff up at this place, they'll stack some of their junk out next to the road, we'll come pick it up for free and haul it off, but we can't go clean the property up without, you know, spending money doing that. Does, does everybody understand what I'm saying? I think you do, I mean, I've heard all this before, I know, but it is a serious problem. And the law makes it real hard to deal with. State law makes you go through a lot of hoops because it's private property. Okay, any questions? Rob, you got anything else?
No, sir, I'm good.
All righty, sir, thank you. Let's hang around though, just for a few minutes here, let's see if something else may come up. Uh, that brings us to the, uh, street forum. Ma'am? Oh, okay, yes, yes, yes. Monty, come on in, buddy, I'm taking up too much time, but you do have to fire away quick as you can, okay?
Good evening. It's been a very productive hot month. We've done a lot of work in preparation for the, uh, the paving that's coming in. We replaced several, several culverts. Just now getting started back on our second and third round of book of them, road, road up, still is spraying, but it seems like the more we spray, the worse it gets. We can't, you know, can't really hardly get on keeping up with our forms of people that's wanting to work for doing these other, other jobs, trying to cut down and, you know, stay within budget of our paving list. So, just to tell everybody, we, we will get to you, but it's just taking us longer than normal to do it. But we, uh, we replaced a lot of culverts, replaced some over on Bragg Street this morning. That was in bad shape. I was just thinking I'd close the road completely down because the culverts are warped out. So, that's, uh, that's where we at right now.
See if we got any questions on these things, city council members, y'all got anything particular you need to ask? Drainage and grass are probably our two biggest problems that we're dealing with. He's talking about Bragg Street, that's over by the rural fire department, the health department, all that stuff. We found a hole just orbiting the street, the whole culvert was e- uh, and eat out under. We had to rip the whole thing out, cut the whole street and did it all in one day, and it's still gotta be hatched permanently, but we got it repaired, got the, a new culvert in. Just things like that, and then like you were talking about, the most of the other work that we're getting those streets ready to be paved is in South Warren, which we get contracts already there to pave the streets, but we had to do a lot of undercutting and repair work, because if we didn't, it would just pave the streets like they were. Six months, you'll be right back like you were. We do not have good compactable soil anymore. If everybody hadn't figured that out, it makes, makes it hard on our streets. Anybody got any questions for Mr. Hornsberg? Let's go to the street committee.
Okay. We do not get to have a meeting, we will have one in the next week or two and get on this rest and see if we can get it all worked out.
Got six items there, I think everybody can see those and see what you're, what you're dealing with, okay? Monty, you got anything else?
I was, like I say, we did get these speed bumps installed on South Rite, I mean, North Rite.
Speed bumps have to be installed.
That's our end line.
Very good. All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, let's get Parks and Recreation, Mr. Wagman, very quickly. Kyle, I think they've got, uh... We got some stuff in there from you, I'm finding, I'm not sure what order it's in, how you put it in the wrong container, but anyway, y'all should have a.
We have it.
Okay, it's over there a little bit further. Two sheets, you got one says rentals for the city of Warren, showing you how many times we've had the train depot rented, the armory rented, Warren shooting range been used over the last month, and then you've got a complete report from Mr. Wag. Anything you want to comment on?
We are starting, gonna start shutting it down, I went over today, we're gonna start winterizing it, getting shut down, get it all cleaned up, done for the year. And she now brought it down.
She brought a big crowd out there.
We talked about, Kyle and I talked a little bit about getting some, um...
This one?
Bisqueun and covering the deep end, that's where most of the debris or that side comes from. Swimming pool cover would be fifty to a hundred thousand dollars, and so that's out of the question, but if we could, we were just talking how much easier it'd be for us to open it back up if we didn't have so much debris in it from the year, and so we're looking at that to see what the cost would be and how we would cover it up.
Well, there's no what's paying, whatever, you know, we can do something.
First four hundred dollars.
Reasonable pause, give a couple of rolls. Help us, certainly willing to try.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Wag? He's, y'all remember, he's, he's taking care of the baseball solid waste complex, a major place to take care of year-round, not just during baseball, we gotta maintain and keep everything out there in good shape, grass, fields, you know, facilities, and then the city park on Martin Street, the city park over where the tennis courts are on the school campus, that is the city of Warrens, we're trying to maintain that, it needs work, the tennis courts do, we're grant, searching for that. And then, of course, the shooting range, the west of the pool, uh, what am I forgetting? The, uh, armory, the depot. We are, we are still having some issues with the homeless population at the city park. All the passmen orders says they can't sleep down there and hang around, they're still trying to do it, blocking the restrooms at times where people can't get in, and now I'm finding them stuffing the.
Culverts.
The culverts that go onto the walking track, getting, getting stones out of the town ranch and then stuffing it with clothes and stuff and blocking the drainage off. I found that personally.
I wonder what they're doing that for, I mean, just out of, just to.
I think they decided they're declaring war on us because we won't let them stay down there.
Twice in the last week.
Yeah.
And it's not that big of a deal right now, but wait till we get a, a big rain.
It could do some serious damage. And, uh, I go down there and walk a lot, I found, I found the culverts just stuffed with old clothes and shoes and stuff, and then they had stones, you couldn't see the clothes up in there. I saw all them stones and everything, you know, blocking, so I started moving that stuff out of there and I found all the other stuff. Kyle, he went down there and took it all out. These people, the two or three that we're definitely dealing with, I'm not gonna call them criminals, but they're, they're, they're in bad shape and they don't need to be out there wandering around, but your court system tells me that we cannot arrest them for being homeless, don't wanna do that anyway. We wanna get them somewhere, but when you talk to them about it, you either get the Bible read to you or you get cussed, usually all at the same time, one just right after the other, they don't, you know, and I've had that happen, I've been out there. Kyle's been out there, I think he had a pretty good going over over the weekend, one of them. They haven't gotten physical or anything like yet that I know of, but who knows, any given time, but we're, we're trying to police it.
And I'd like to say too, that I found that we had a meeting or, and that when we call, not we, when the sheriff calls the prisons or jails to take, if a homeless person or anybody breaks the law, they do not have to accept them. So, if they're mentally, if they have something wrong, they can say, we don't take them, and then there's nowhere, and they only hold them for 24 hours anyway, but.
The system's broken.
Right.
I'm just gonna tell y'all.
Mental health is a huge problem.
It is. It is, no question. Okay, without, I'm, anything else?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, thank y'all. All right, Community Economic Development, Councilmember Cooper, I recognize you.
Yes, sir. Um, July 22nd, we're in the Economic Development Committee, we did meet and we were able to address all our topics, um, along with some motions to present to the city council. The reference of the ordinance, 972, food truck ordinance, and also, um...
No, 970 is the food truck ordinance. 972 is the tiny house.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at tiny house.
That's okay.
That's in my mind too. Okay, um, so, um, first on our, on our agenda is the main street property, that's the O'Brien building, O'Brien lot downtown with O'Brien, um, Mar- uh, Mar- no, where Brian's used to be. A potential developer has talked to a city council about building apartments on the site. We also talked about a food court being placed there as well, but the apartment, um, town house seems to be, um, interesting and we wanna kinda get some more information on it. And if it was decided that we did go with, um, the O'Brien building, the O'Brien lot, being utilized for the apartment, um, complex, then there are other properties that we could consider for the food, food courts here in Warren. With the building, um, the, the potential developer talked to Rob Johnson and I would like for Rob to come in and give us a brief review of what they talked to him about.
And you got any update on the contact you had about the, uh, possibly looking at the O'Brien lot for a private development of apartments?
Uh, no, no.
Are they waiting on us or they?
No, sir, they're, they're doing, they're doing their due diligence on what they need to, to look at.
So, we're, we're kinda waiting them to get back with us and see what they would request or what they would.
That was the last time I, when I met you with them, that was, that was it. They wanna get all their ducks in a row and their eyes value teeth crawl, all that before they present.
But they are interested.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am, by all means.
They are interested. And we have pictures in our pack, but we don't have none available for you all out there, but it's a nice townhouse, suburb-like look that would be, um, a great access for the city of Warren. Thank you, Rob.
Yes, ma'am.
And we will talk to you, we would, we would bring more information, uh, further in the future about the food court. Okay, the, um, new city flag, um, it has previously been discussed that the city, um, might have a city, have a city flag made and we wanna make it available, that's the city flag right there, the new city flag, and we wanna make it available to, um, sale to the public, and so we need to discuss the sizes of the flag, the prices to charge, and does the council desire to proceed with us doing this?
I make a motion that we move forward with the city flag, check it into the garden flag and the three by five yard, um, I guess it's called a standard flag.
Okay, got a motion, the second, but we'll move forward, we're getting some specific, I guess, cost and that type of thing and, and, and bring, so the committee can look at it and decide how they would wanna make them available or sell them or whatever they wanna do with them. Question, discussion of that motion? All favor, show of hands. I see six in favor, is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Going on to ordinance, um, 972, um, on the tiny house, the building official and the planning commission recently met with Jim Vaughn Tonto to discuss upgrading the city's, um, zoning and planning ordinance. They have, they have, they have not been updated, this has not been updated in many years, this ordinance has not been updated in many years. This would include tiny houses and charges in state law, so we recommend that we hold off until the planning commission complete their review, because we were asked to approve, uh, ordinance on tiny house, but it's just too much involved and, and it's too much has not been, um, researched throughout the state. There's really no law standing in place for tiny houses. Okay, and last, is ordinance 970... 970, the mobile food truck vendor, um, ordinance. The Community Economic Development Committee proposed the following motions to ordinance 970 regarding the food. regarding the food, the mobile food vendors. First, adding outdoor vending regulations. All outdoor vending activities, whether conducted on public or private property, will be subject to the same regulations as a mobile food vendor. We motion. Second.
I'll second.
I, I think, I think y'all, well, I guess we take it one at a time.
I think it would be best, that's why I'm.
Now, what, what this, what this amounts to, reach one of these things that gets approved, so everybody's clear on the process here, I'll take the motion as second, uh, to approve that. What we're talking about here is for, there's other vendors besides food vendors that come into town and set up for periods of time, you know, either a tent or a little truck or a trailer. They sell flags and banners and, you know, all kinds of stuff, but they're not local, local people. So what you're talking about is we would go, come back for each one of these things, whatever y'all approve, and it would be, we would put an amendment together on the current ordinance 970 that deals with the food trucks and so forth. All of this would be incorporated into that amended ordinance, to do away with things that it replaces and, and then add these things like, like this one, nothing in the current one about outdoor vending, I don't think so. So what you're voting on right now, we're not, you're not gonna approve any of this ordinance tonight if we're gonna go back and rewrite, don't get the city attorney to, uh, prepare an amendment for the ordinance, but the motion second is that we add this outdoor vending, you got a copy of it there, describes it, add that to the ordinance. Is there question or discussion on that motion? Okay, all in favor, show of hands. I see six in favor. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Okay, number two, the permit fees. The current quarterly fee of $250 will be replaced with a monthly fee of $55, payable only during the months of operation. Mobile food vendors, residents operating on property that already pays for water, sewer, or dumpsters service will be exempt from the $55 monthly fee. All mobile food vendors will continue to pay the $30 annual privilege fee. Monthly fee, monthly, monthly fees collected will be allocated to the solid waste revenue funds. That is our motion.
Okay, I'm gonna hear a second.
Yes.
Okay. Now, I think just for clarification, when you're talking about the paid water and sewer, that would be any vendor that locates in Warren, if they hook their truck or trailer, whatever it may be, onto the public water system, because some of them have places where they can do that, some of them don't. If they hook, if they're gonna hook onto the city water and sewer system, they're gonna get a bill anyway for that, and that would have the garbage fee on there, so that's, that's the purpose of that, right? Just making sure we're, understand what we're talking about.
Residents. Residents only, that would be exempt.
That wouldn't be anybody hooked onto a water and sewer would not be exempt? And that wasn't the way I understood it, but I'm just making sure I under. Well, what do you, what's the definition of residents?
People that are resident of Brown County, and people that.
Okay, so if somebody, just make sure we're clear, got a motion second to approve this, item two. So if somebody comes in here from Star City and gets a, you know, finds a piece of property and rents the property or buys a piece of property and there is water and sewer hookup, and they hook up onto it, they still gotta pay. That's what I'm saying. The definition of resident makes all the difference in the world here, so we got, I thought what y'all were doing was to just say that anybody that sets one up if they're hooked into the water and sewer system. Because they're gonna be paying a gar, they're gonna be paying a bill and a garbage fee if they're hooked onto it. That was what I understood, that's, that's why I'm asking. Not very many of them look onto water and sewer.
Right, there's only a few, there's only a.
There's not a lot to do, but there might be some to do.
Well, how many, there's not that many food trucks we're talking about, anyway.
Seven, about seven.
Yeah, but you may have 20, six months from now, I mean, you gotta do these ordinances where they affect, whether it's a small number or a large number.
No, I, I understand that, I mean, I'm not, I understand that, but what I'm saying, like, if they're, if somebody comes in and they, let's say, a, a food truck that's been hooking up to a spot decides not to do that day, and they come in from across it and they rent that spot for that day from the landowner, the landowner's still gonna get, still have to pay the water and sewer. So they're still get, we're still getting the.
Well, it depends on who the water bill's in their name.
Well, I'm saying the landowner.
Well, not necessarily, they, the landowner may be making the person that's renting the property pay the water bill.
But I'm saying it's still coming in that landowner's name, though.
Not necessarily.
But they have water, somebody has to be paying, it's not cut off once a month.
Well, if it's, okay, let's make sure we understand how this works. You got a lot out there, there's nothing on it, don't bill on it, no nothing to, but there may be their usage. And there is a water and sewer connection. So John Doe, I'm just using Star City, because I know we've had some traders who've come in here from Star City, and they come in and they rent that property, then they're the ones gonna be hooking on the water and sewer and getting the water and sewer bill.
But they still have to be going through somebody.
Not if they've rented the property.
Well, they rent the property from somebody.
But that don't mean the person owns the property is the one that's getting the water bill. It's the user of the water and sewer that's gonna get the water bill. Unless the owners made some bill that I'm gonna pay the water bill for you, then, then, you know, that would, then they'd, they'd have to pay that, but I, I would think.
It's like renting a house.
Yeah.
The renter pays the water.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly. I, I, I don't wanna make this more complicated than it is, I just wanna make sure that I, I know, uh, if we're gonna, if it's from out of, out of Bradley County, that's, the person's gonna be responsible for it. We're not gonna charge them if they're hooked up to water and sewer, we're not gonna pay them a garbage bill, we're not gonna charge them, but then somebody comes in from out of town and hooks one up, you're gonna, they're gonna have to pay a garbage bill, and yet you're gonna make them pay another garbage bill.
So this is where I think we got crossed up, Miss Chanel, you could, correct me if I'm wrong, okay? Are you listening to me, Chanel?
I am, but I'll read his recommendation that he had, that he had.
What I, because at one time your recommendation was if they pay property tax, if they own them, then they were exempt, residents. I think that's where the word resident came from.
That was, that was before.
That, that's what I said, it was something that got crossed up.
This has totally been changed.
That's what I'm saying, it got crossed up in the writing, but that, that's what I'm saying, if, we've taken two things and put them into one somewhere along the line. Am I wrong? I mean, you see what I'm saying, Ms. Henderson?
I just wanna make sure we got it worded right.
It was different proposals, is what it was considered.
Right.
This has gotta be written properly, or you're gonna have a big mess on there. That's hard to, and, and this is fine, I mean, you could do it however you wanna do it, but why don't you just treat everybody the same? That, that thing that I sent y'all has nothing to do with this now. Y'all have changed, y'all have changed this to what the committee decided you wanted to do, and that's fine.
Can I use some of your recommendations?
Well, this is not what I recommended, uh, originally, what you changed all this to, but that's okay, that's, it's up to what y'all decide to do. But it's still gotta be clear who's gonna be paying it and who's not, if they're hooked up to water and sewer. And again, I don't think you'll have very many of them that'll be hooked up to water and sewer, but you could have them. It could, could happen, depending on where they, where they set up. I mean, what you've got here is perfectly fine, just treat everybody the same. If they hook on to water and sewer, then.
Take the word resident.
Take the word resident.
So we are considering, like, if we do get this food court in the future.
That's gonna be, we'll have to go back and, because then the, we're gonna, the food court will be different, like, we would, it would be on city property, so that's gonna be something down the line.
Back to day to day.
Yeah.
Okay, so let me start over.
Well, we got a motion on the floor, now if you wanna, if you want to amend that motion and remove a word or add another word or something, you can do that.
I mean, the maker would have to.
I'd like to amend.
Okay.
And take out a word.
Take out the word.
I think you could take the word out, resident, just strike that word, I think it's perfectly fine.
They say take out a word, resident, that's the word they wanna take out.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and I second it, so I, I will.
All right, so the motion is second is to amend the motion that was on the floor and remove the word resident from the proposal, is that correct? Okay, got a motion and a second, you got, you got that? Okay, all right, everybody need to discuss that? The motion to remove the word resident, that's what we're talking about. Okay, we'll call for the vote on that, all in favor, show of hands, please. I see five in favor, all opposed, one opposes, okay? Now, that brings us back to the original motion as amended, which root, which means to approve the permit fee, uh, section there, minus that word resident being, being in it. Any discussion on, further discussion on that motion?
So it's $55 a month?
You're making them pay the garbage fee, if they're a mouse, too.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
If they're not already paying one.
Only if you operate, and if you don't operate that much, you don't have to pay anything.
Right.
During the months of operation, so if you don't, if you don't operate, you don't have to pay anything.
Right.
And then if you're operating with your, your, your truck or trailer hooked up to a water sewer.
You're already paying it, you're already paying it. A commercial.
Okay, everybody clear now on what you, what you hope now, this is to approve that number two item there, permit fees as is listed there, minus that word resident being, being part of it, so everybody that would fit into that category would be paying, or not paying, depending on if they're hooked up or not to water and sewer.
And paying the $30.
And the, and the privilege, yes, ma'am.
And that's for every business?
Yes, it's every business.
In Warren.
Well, it's a minimum, that's a minimum, uh.
Right, but I'm saying who.
Commercial, commercial payment, yes. All right, y'all ready to vote on that?
I thought we just did.
That was the amendment.
That was the minimum, one word. We amended the ordinance.
Okay.
Okay. This is on the motion as amended, all those in favor, show of hands. Five in favor, those opposed, I see one opposed, okay? All right, go ahead, Councilmember.
Okay, um, number three, hours of operation. We, um, motion that the, uh, ordinance remove any set hours of operation for local food vendors.
Okay.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, any question or discussion? Doesn't mean they can operate any time they want to?
Yes, sir.
I think the ordinance originally adopted had some kind of time on it, so you'd be amending that where they, they just stay open all night if they want to.
The original, um, ordinance was, um, operated from 10 a.m. to 12 a.m.
Any, any other discussion, the motion is to remove any time limits on when they can be open? All in favor of the motion, show of hands, please. I see six, six in favor. Okay, that leaves one more deal there, number four.
And these items here just being exempt, um, these regulations will not apply to local churches, um, church sponsored events, nonprofit organizations, residential or commercial catering, the Warren Chamber of Commerce, and residents selling farm raised products. We motion add.
Okay.
Second. I give.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Hooper and seconded by Councilmember Henderson, okay? Everybody clear on this motion? Y'all those in favor, show of hands, please. I see six in favor, okay? So, is that all, Councilmember Hooper, anything else? I guess what your committee had come up with, right? Okay, so what, what we, what we will do now, that y'all have adopted those four points there, things that are included, we go back to the city attorney and we amend ordinance 970 to take these things into consideration and put them in the ordinance, okay? Then the ordinance will have to come back to you and be adopted, okay? The amendment will have to be adopted. This is just telling us what you, what you want in it. Okay?
Yes.
What else you got?
That's all.
All right, thank you. Uh, that takes care of, uh, Community Economic Development Committee, Ways and Means, Councilmember Henderson.
All right, thank you, and I'll be very brief. We have three items listed, number one is the new revenue for safety that is still under study. Uh, number two, uh, 2025 employee raises that we ask to remain, uh, on the agenda. We will, we'll start, uh, looking at the calendar year 26, uh, budget, and it will turn from 25 employee raises to 26 employee raises, so it will remain there. We have one item, uh, that will require action, and that is the memorandum, uh, of agreement. Uh, a memorandum of agreement is one that has dollars, uh, tacked to it, and the memorandum of understanding is just what it says, an understanding, uh, between, uh, two different parties. And I just wanted to share that because we do have new council members. My motion is to approve the memorandum of agreement between the University of Arkansas at Monticello and the city of Warren, and the actual agreement that you have in your packet. We are amending section two under term. This agreement shall commence on September 1, 2025, and shall remain in effect until December 31, 2025, and is subject to renewal each calendar year thereafter unless earlier terminated pursuant to the section nine of this agreement. Both parties acknowledge a shared intent to maintain and extend this partnership beyond the initial terms subject to mutual agreement and satisfactory performance. Renewal or extension of this agreement shall be accomplished through a written agreement signed by both parties, and that is the motion to approve this memorandum of agreement between University of Arkansas, Monticello, and the city of Warren.
We've got a motion and a second, this is a committee recommendation, uh, and that's, uh, to approve this, uh, memorandum of agreement with that change as was read to you in the, the term. So we would simply send this back to the university and say, okay, the city of Warren agrees to it, but the term, that's the language in the term. Is there question or discussion? Everybody clear on what we're doing? I think this is gonna be a good thing for the city of Warren, because we're gonna make some money with the University of Arkansas at Monticello using the shooting range as basically their home range for competitive shooting as well as practicing. Question or discussion? This is for approval as, as stated by the chairperson. All in favor, show of hands. I see six votes in favor, thank you very much.
That ends my report, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, number eight, reports, business boards and commissions, parks and recreation, uh, there is some minutes there. Uh, you'll notice the shooting. there is some minutes there. Uh, you'll notice the shooting range is on the agenda again. I should have said this before y'all voted, but the, the, uh, Parks and Recreation Commission did review the memorandum as well. They, they just are recommending, they agree with you, they agree wanting you to note that they approved the entering and agreement. They didn't get into any of the details, the terms, but just, they thought it was a good thing to do, so I just want to call that to y'all's attention. Then you've got, uh, and that's, you got that in writing, uh, there in your report. And then you've got, uh, planning commission has not, has not met since the last meeting. And you got the aviation commission. They had a, a kind of a phone meeting to, uh, discuss some things, uh, about some repairs down there to one of the hangars. Uh, water and sewer, you've got their minutes of their June 27th, uh, commission meeting and their financial reports. And then you've got the housing authority. I'm going quick. You've got a question, please? Say so. You've got minutes of the Warren Housing Authority of July the 28th. And also just a one-page summary of their most recent audit. They're like everybody else. They have to be audited, but it's just gives you the summary. It's not a whole audit, but give you a summary there. Cultural Center, you've got the monthly report on it. Unfinished business, there's nothing. New business, nothing. Announcements, toll-free is football time. King Wigg. Okay, August 29th, an open lumberjack football game right here at home in Greenbrier. So we want to make, make sure everybody knows that. Uh, it gets out sports lumberjacks. Municipal building, uh, this is for September 1, Monday, September 1, but it's before we'd be scheduled to meet again, is Labor Day. So municipal building will be closed down and, uh, so forth. Some city services will be closed. Then you got the bills for July 2025. It's in your packet.
Know that we pay the bills.
All right, I think I got a council member toll-free basis second. Is that correct? Yeah. Okay. Question, discussion on the bills? Now, you got everyone up listed here from last month, so if you've got any questions, I want you to see them, to see where the money's being spent.
We missed all the weekend.
You studied all the weekend. Very good. Question, discussion? All in favor, paying the bills? Show of hands, please. I see six in favor. Next meeting, regular meeting is set for September the 8th of 2025 unless other action's taken. And I don't see anything else, so I will therefore call a meeting adjourned. Thank y'all.